Mr. Clerk, would you call the roll?
Jerem.
Here.
Mulligan.
Here.
Stothard.
Here.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Here.
Gray.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Here. Would you please rise for the pleasure of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Chris Jerem?
[inaudible 00:00:30] to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a third team and justice for all.
Closing of the basket here. We received for us and all the people affected by the flooding and keep in mind those who are working so hard on behalf of our city to protect its citizens and its resources from destruction by the flood of 2011.
City Clerk certifies publication of the daily record on June 3rd, notice very pre-council and regular State Council meeting June 7th, 2011. A current copy of the open meetings act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
If you have a cell phone or a pager, we ask that you turn it off or to vibrate. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, first item.
First item is election of officers. We need to elect a temporary chair.
Pre-chair.
Second. Roll call. Jerem.
Yes.
Mulligan.
Yes.
Stothard. Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
We will now be electing a chairman. Theresa will be passing out ballots. We're going to pass out a ballot which have each of the seven council members on it there to vote for one. We'll collect the ballots and once a council member receives four votes, that person is elected chair or elected president of the council and then we'll go on to vice president.
Tom Mulligan, four votes. Tom Mulligan is now the new president of the council. We'll now proceed with the selection of vice president.
Gary Gurnett, four votes. Gary is the new vice president.
Ready. I just want to make a brief statement. I certainly appreciate the support of my fellow council members who voted for me and I'd just like to reiterate what I said on the day that I was sworn in, that I promised to base all of my decisions based upon what is best for the city of Omaha. And I thank you all. And as we used to say in the railroad business, here we go.
Zoning ordinance on final rating planning board attachments will take items nine and 10 together. Nine is ordinance to approve a major mixed-use development agreement for West Dodge Station to allow the development of an office complex located northwest of 180th Street and West Dodge Road. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 10 is subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Are there any proponents?
Yes, I'm happy to call you for the first time, Mr. President. Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road.
Thank you.
Here now on behalf of the applicant with me today also is Jeff Lake, the Olson and Associates, the consulting engineers on this project. We're here simply to answer any questions that you might have regarding this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? No lights.
There is a light.
Excuse me. I have to give you a... Um, yeah. Mr. Festerson.
I just thought I'd be your first test there.
Thank you.
Mr. Jobin, just one question for you, maybe even a commercial for you. If you don't mind expanding upon what this project does and it seems like not a big deal on just being agenda items number nine and 10, but it is a big deal in terms of this commitment to Omaha and what it means for jobs and a corporate presence if you want to take a few seconds just to explain that.
Yes, this is the major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement is to provide for an office campus for CSG Systems Incorporated. They are currently in Omaha, but this will allow them to expand their business a little bit and provide for a new campus out on the West Dodge corridor. So we're pretty excited about that and they are as well. The initial buildings are two 100,000 square foot buildings and then there's a one additional 45,000 square foot building that'll be built in the future. So with that...
Can I consolidate, it's about how many jobs?
I believe it's about 1100 to 1200 jobs.
Yeah, it's a great commitment to Omaha and I definitely am supportive of the project and appreciate you bringing it to us.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Being no further requests for speakers, Mr. Clerk, the roll.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
We'll take items 11 and 12 together. 11 is resolution planer plan B M A K K Industrial located northeast of 16th Street and 90th Street is hereby accepted and preparation of final plan is authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And 12 is resolution to replant is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items number 11 and 12 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Jeff Elliott, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 330 North 117th Street. This is a piece of industrial ground in North Omaha, about 21 acres, and this is simply cleaning up the legal description to provide for two platted lots on the property. And I'd be happy to answer any further questions about it.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Please state your name and address.
Sure. My name's David Wood. I'm with ABS Corporation. We're located at 16th and Reed Street.
Go ahead. Keep going.
So...
Lace Fugelberg. And I'm with ABS Corporation at 16th and Reed.
So the question is, what we're asking for, we've been a business in Omaha for about 50 years and classifying the area, what its purpose and intent or use is going to be, has really not laid out by this information so far to our company.
Yeah. We're FDA regulated facility and we want to make sure...
Could you speak up to the microphone so we could hear you, please?
We're an FDA regulated facility and we want to make sure we know what's going in around us, okay? So we want to know what the intent and use of the plots are for.
Okay. Have you had any conversation with...
Have not any conversation with BMAC.
Okay. Did you attend the planning board meeting or did you, were you able to get any information?
We received a notice about two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, from the city itself giving us an idea that there would be actually an occupant in the building that's, you know, behind one of our plants. So that was the first we actually knew that the property had been sold.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, if I can have Mr. Elliott come forward and just provide a very quick synopsis of what the plans are. This is just a replant, as I understand, you're not changing the zoning in any way?
We are not changing the zoning. It's currently zoned GI. We're not changing the zoning at all. BMAC is a waste management company. They're going to build their headquarters office at this location. They're also looking at putting in a glass recycling manufacturing plant there as well.
And that's all, of course, permitted within the industrial classification GI?
It is.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Motion approved.
We have a motion and a second. No further lights. Clerk, the roll call, please.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number 13, resolution planer plan entitled St. Richards Campus with a waiver of lot frontage located northeast of Fort Street and Fontana Boulevard is hereby accepted and preparation of final plan is hereby authorized. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item 13 begins now. Are there any proponents?
My name is Sister Marilyn Ross with Holy Name House and Corporation and I'm here to represent the corporation and answer any questions you might have. Perry Pointer, our architect, is also here if you have questions.
Okay. Thank you, Sister. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We have a motion to approve in a second. Mr. Clerk.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 14 through 15 shall be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 16 through 17 shall be laid over for two weeks. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda item number 18 shall be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Item number 19, resolution and special use permit application submitted by Open Door Mission for a special use permit to allow a large group living in a general industrial district located at 2705 North 20th Street East is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number 19 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Candace Gregory, President and CEO with the Open Door Mission. We've been serving the hungry and homeless for more than 50 years in our community and this special use permit is on property that we've been on for the last 26 years, so we're asking permission to continue to do ministry there. Our architect is here, Perry Pointer, our CFO, Richard Denherter, and Jim Royer with J Development, who's been our development.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Public hearing is closed. We have a motion in a second. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, agenda items number 20 through 21 shall be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Liquor, item number 22 and 23 go together. 22 is Dante Pizzeria Napoleone, 16901 Wright Plaza Suites 173 and 178. A new application, old location for a Class C liquor license. They're upgrading and adding a catering. And 23 is a catering license for the same applicant, same location.
Mr. President, members of the council...
Public hearing on agenda items 22 and 23 begin now.
My name is Myron Calp and I'm located at 11404 West Dodge Road, Suite 500. I represent the applicant Dante and Dundee LLC, doing business as Dante Pizzeria Napalitano. As clerk said, we're upgrading the license from an I to a C so that they can sell their special wines, their Italian wines, in a package form. They're also asking for a catering license. Other than that, there's no change in their current operations. And I'm with me today is Mike LaFurla, who's the general manager and also the manager of Dante and Dundee LLC. We'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Item number 24, Ryan's Bistro, 17607 Gold Plaza, new application, old location for Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda item 24 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Yes, I'm Dale Carson's. I own the GRC Holdings II LLC that owns Ryan Bistro and doing business with Ryan Bistro. And if I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve. Second.
No further lights? No lights. We got a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 28, Snack Attack, 4854 Q Street. Which one? I thought it was 28. Oh, I know what I did. Got to turn the back page. Item number 25, A Plus Buffet, 14426 West Center Road. A Class I liquor license, application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item number 25 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Mr. President and I'm Mr. City Council. And my name is Yun Guo and I own a business is 144, 14426 West Center Road. My name is A Plus Buffet. Now doing a business, A Plus Buffet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents?
My name's Dale Abramson with Universal Experts, 628 North 40th Street, Suite B 68131. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 26, Papa Christie's Chicago Originals, 7024 Maple Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location. It does not conform to Rule 7. And you have communications opposing.
Public hearing on agenda item number 26 begins now. Mr. Kelly.
Yes. Good afternoon, City Council. Mr. President, members of council, my name is Sean Kelly, 7134 Pacific Street. Here today on behalf of the applicant. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. It is located near a church. We would appreciate your approval pending a hearing at the Liquor Control Commission. We have not received any communication from the churches within 150 feet. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Kelly, just for the record, I'm supportive of what you're all doing here and it's an exciting addition to Benson, I think. Longest stretch we just repaved, so hopefully that'll be nice for your business too. And it's a renovation, I understand, of a current building?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah. But it's near churches, so what we need to do is have a recommendation to approve, subject to the state approving 150-foot rule and proceed that direction. So with that, I'll go ahead and recommend approval of this application if the church located within 150 feet does not object at a hearing before the liquor commission.
We have a motion and a second? Yes, Mr. Clerk. Please call the roll.
Jerem.
Pass.
Mulligan. Or I'm sorry, Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Mr. Jerem passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's approved, 601 passing with the stipulation. Item number 27 is the silhouettes at 314 South 16th Street. New application, old location, it's a long form renewal of the 2011-12 licensing year. It's a Class I liquor license. We have communications from the attorney requesting withdrawal of this application.
Motion to withdraw, second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jerem.
Pass.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It's allowed withdrawal, 601 passing. Item number 28, Snack Attack, 4854 Q Street. Off sale beer license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on agenda item 28 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Adam White, 10330 Regency Parkway Drive, on behalf of Macom Enterprises. This is simply a change in ownership, but no change in the operations of the business and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Item number 29, Hy-Vee number 7 at 3505 L Street. A catering liquor license, application, old location, and presently hold a Class C liquor license.
Public hearing on item number 29 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Scott Sauter, 3325 Longview Court, Lincoln, Nebraska, on behalf of Hy-Vee to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? No lights?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. We'll take items 30 and 31 together. They're both Bruburgers. Catering license, one for 4629 South 108th Street, application, old location, have a Class C. The other one is at 7515 Pacific Street, catering liquor license.
Public hearing on agenda items 30 and 31 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, councilman, I'm Stephen C. Warren, Sr. I'm the owner of Bruburgers and both of the corporations. I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents? No lights for request?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved. They're both approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 32, Heartland Cafe and Catering, 2615 North Main Street. Request permission for an addition of Sidewalk Cafe across 21 by 88 to the south.
Public hearing on agenda item 32 begins now. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, councilmembers, my name is Sharon Janowski. I'm the owner of Heartland Cafe. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero. Item number 33, Olympic Lounge Whiskey Tango, 141921 Farmham Street. Request permission for a special designated license for a beer garden on July 15th through the 20th from 5:00 PM to 2:00 AM with music ending at midnight and also from July 21st to the 24th.
Public hearing on agenda item 33 begins now. Are there any proponents?
I built trios, 1419 Farmham.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents?
Roger Holdhouse Law Office, 319 South 17th Street, resident of Orpheum Towers, ninth I want your attention that these, their beer garden is in a parking lot, catty corner from where I'm trying to sleep as long, as well as scores of other people in the Orpheum Towers and now directly across the street from the newly reopened Deco Hotel. It's been way too loud in the past. We've had complaints. I've had to talk with the city attorney and Mr. Brown in the past on this. But to have that outside in the parking lot with people trying to sleep is just obscene. It is not good for Omaha.
Yes, sir, thank you. Are there any other opponents? Public hearing is closed. No lights for request. Oh, Mr. Festerson.
Just a question given that, for the applicant, I suppose. So the significance of July 15th through 20th, what's happening then?
Actually getting together with the people from Hotel Jazz, Jimmy John's, going to have an access point for shuttles and buses to the Red Sky Festival. Radio station's going to be set up. There's not going to be any, no bands, nothing.
Okay.
So...
And music stops at midnight?
Yeah. But there are not going to be bands, it'll be TVs or stereo, I mean, nothing.
There's no music.
Radio broadcasting, radio, you know, whatever's on the radio.
Okay, I see.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I see another light here, too. I can defer to that if you want to...
Would you please restate your name and address?
I'm sorry, I built trios, 1419 Farmham.
Okay. And then the music, are you going to have a DJ or is it just...
Yeah, the DJs from the radio station.
Okay. All right, sir.
I don't know if they're probably DJs or whatever they're called.
So it's the DJ that stops at midnight?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that there were no bands.
Yeah, no bands.
...station, it's the possibility that the radio station will have their DJ from the radio station addressing the crowd and maybe playing some music that's on radio.
And we have someone there also because of how the radio station, where you have to have one of your employees there with them.
Right.
Doing also as they talk during the music.
And the, regardless of what you have, that'll be silenced at midnight.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You'll have your security like you're required to do.
Yes, sir.
And so with that, I think we've addressed, we've heard those concerns in the past and I'm comfortable we've addressed that this time. Of course, with some of these other special designated licenses, you can expect that either myself or somebody else or neighbor will be down to check on you, so make sure that you use your best efforts.
And if someone has any concerns, they're more than welcome to come talk to us and no one has, so...
Well, I'd encourage you to exchange information with Mr. Holdhouse so he has your number so he can contact you if he's up on the ninth floor and there's music past midnight or...
Of course.
Thank you. Motion approved.
Second.
No further lights. Roll call.
Jerem.
Yes.
Stothard.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause an item placed on consent agenda to be removed. Items removed, consent agenda should be taken up by city council immediately following consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by city council rules of... city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items number 34 through 35 were held on May 24th, 2011. We have a motion and a second.